I can't hear anything.
Hello, Commissioner. City Attorney.
Hi, everybody.
Doing an audio check for Commissioner Colville?
Yes, he can hear you.
Thank you. Good, good. Thank you.
Everyone hear me?
Yes.
Looks like we're still missing a couple of people.
Yeah, you, you have a quorum. You have four.
Okay, so we can go ahead and get started then?
It's, it's just turned 7:30. Maybe give them a couple more minutes.
Okay, great. Thanks, Paul.
Our new chair is right to business. I like it.
7:30.
Get that whip out.
The gavel.
Looks like a little alteration. You've got plaster.
Yeah. Okay, my computer is a little bit hung up here.
Are you talking about accessing the site? My computer was really slow trying to get on to our website.
No, I'm just trying to move some screens around and I don't know why. Although I did have a child on the computer earlier and, you know, some, some, some document popped up with shortcut keys, so I'm not sure. There might have been some.
I could have done it.
Yeah. Okay, so we're missing.
Zisser.
Bookbinder, right?
Bookbinder and Zisser.
Yeah, Adam just come off the SARC call, so he might be grabbing a cup of tea.
Okay, that's good to know.
He was on there. He was definitely joining. I think he was fighting a cat on his keyboard.
Yeah, that's right. Those, those family members that.
Madam Chair. So in the, in the notes down below, Adam said he didn't get an invite. Can he get promoted to panelist?
Hi.
Hi, I'm here, honest. Oh, there he is.
Hi, thank you for promoting me. I'm not sure what happened. I didn't have an invite, so I just went to the, the packet and joined, so. Pardon the wait.
No problem. Glad you're here.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Velamir from People's Associates, item two.
Great, welcome.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Chair, it's up to you if you want to start now at 7:33.
Okay.
If you want to give Zisser a little bit more time, it's up to you.
Well, I guess no one's heard from him, right? We're expecting him?
Oh, I think he's jumping on right now.
Okay, perfect.
Good evening. Sorry, I had a little technical difficulty.
We were just discussing those. Welcome. Glad you made it.
Thanks.
All right. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the meeting of the Planning Commission for January 26, 2021. Corinne, can we have a roll call vote, please? Corinne, I can't hear you.
I think you're on mute.
Me now?
Yes.
Did it backwards. Commissioners Bookbinder?
Present.
Oh, actually, I have to do you later, Mr. Commissioner Ching. Commissioner Colville?
Present.
Mr. Cray?
Here.
Mr. Riblin?
Here.
Mr. Zisser?
There.
Vice Chair Ching?
Here.
And Chair Ostrowski?
Here.
All present.
Great, thank you. So, next item on the agenda is the meeting minutes. Has everybody had a chance to review the minutes?
Yes.
Great. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
Real quick, I have a question. I noticed that my report about the Commission Collaborative got somewhat truncated. I realized I just, I essentially read a ton of notes into the record. Corinne, would you, do you want me to send along my notes or anything like that, or is what we have there like good enough as a summary? And because the meeting was public.
So, it's never going to be a full transcript of the whole meeting. It's just what I can capture.
Oh, I understand. I just wanted to surface that. Like, I'm okay with it. I just wanted to make sure we're all good with that.
Okay, great. Thank you, Commissioner Bookbinder. Do we have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll move approval of the minutes of our last meeting.
Do we have a second? Great. Thank you. Corinne, can we have a voice vote, please?
I'll listen here.
Hi.
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 Great, thank you. Director Quimoyne, do we have any communications for the Commission tonight?
There are no communications.
Great. Are there any agenda modifications or postponements?
And there are none as well.
Great, thank you. Okay, this is the point on the agenda where members of the public may address the Commission on items of concern to the community that are not listed on the agenda this evening. People may speak up to five minutes on any matter concerning the Commission. Do we have anybody who would like to speak tonight? Okay. With that, we don't have any oral requests, so I'll close the public hearing. And we'll move on to the, the agenda for this evening. And before we get started, Commissioners, do we have any disclosures regarding any of the items on the agenda tonight?
No.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, so we'll move on to item number one. So this is the public hearing to consider the application of Dargo Degavoc for a modification PLN 202085 to a previously approved planned development permit CC 81-12 to allow construction of an approximately 426 square foot, single-story addition to an existing single-family residence and a new approximately 1,011 square foot accessory dwelling unit on property located at 1409 Harriet Avenue. Staff has, staff is recommending that this item be deemed categorically exempt under SEQA. The tentative city council meeting for this item is scheduled for February 16, 2021, and our project planner is Nas Healy. Nas?
Thank you. Is everyone able to hear me?
Yes, we are. Thank you.
Okay, great. As mentioned, item one is the application for a major modification to a previous planned development permit. And if you could just bear with me while I share my screen. And so the property address is 1409 Harriet Avenue. The project site is owned planned development and located at the corner of Harriet Avenue and Harriet Court. And this is north of Pollard Road and Highway 85. In 1981, this six lot development here in the dashed line was created through a zone change and a planned development permit. And the subject property here was already developed with an existing home, and that home was retained, and then the five other homes were constructed along with a private street. So as such, with a previous planned development permit, adding any new square footage requires city council approval through a major modification. So here we have the site plan. Harriet Avenue is here at the front. Harriet Court is at the side. The proposal would include a new two-car garage addition to the existing single-family home. And it would also include a new ADU in the rear yard. There's an existing detached garage here that would be demolished as part of the project. And the driveway access to this garage is all the way around the side, so that would remain the same with the proposed project. And then this site plan does reflect some revisions that were provided with the, in terms of the garage design, and I will go over more details of that on a different slide. So here we have the front elevation of the main house. And this area here is the proposed garage addition. We also have the front elevation of the ADU. Little is going to be visible from the street. But this is what you would see from the, the front elevation, but it is mostly behind the, the main house here. And staff found that the ADU is consistent with all applicable standards. So during the SARC meeting, there were some comments on the original design shown here in terms of the prominence of the garage and the limited integration of the addition with the existing home. So in response, the applicant reconfigured the front. The, the offset was mirrored, and then the setback was increased from the street. So you can see more of the front entry is visible with those changes. And then here's a different angle, and it showed, the revised design. And it shows more of a substantial connection between the addition and the main house. So with that, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution recommending that the city council approve a major modification to a previous planned development permit. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Nas. Do we have any questions for Nas?
Question. So just to get an idea of what it looked like before, the original garage was where the new ADU will be, so the change of the view is instead of being a house with a garage in the back, it now looks like a garage slash house from the street?
Yes.
Okay.
The, I can pull up the site plan again, but the, you kind of had to go down the interior side of the property and then around to access the garage.
Okay, that's right.
Does that answer your question?
Yes, I just wanted to make sure I had a picture of what was going on.
Any other questions? Okay, with that, I'll open the public hearing. Would the applicant like to speak?
Uh, no.
Okay, great. Thank you. Does anyone else want to speak on this item? Okay, with that, I'll close the public hearing, and the Commission can begin discussion. Who would like to start us off?
I, I don't mind chiming in, Commissioner Ostrowski. Sometimes there's a SARC report, but I think it was really covered by, by Nas Healy, and I think that that improvement was really nice, made a nice touch, and really no issues with this, so I think it, from what I can tell, really a pretty straightforward approval with that nice change that they made. It was nice that they accommodated SARC, and it was a good idea by SARC, so that's my two cents. Thanks.
Great, thank you.
I will comment, I, in general, in favor of ADUs. I think this one looks like it matched the house well. I think it'll be a good addition to the neighborhood. Question. I'm vaguely aware that we are, there's a lot of mandates involving ADUs. It looks like we need to modify a planned development permit to allow these people to add an ADU to their property. Is that, like, are we allowed to require that?
There is a specific section of our code, and maybe Bill, if you had something to add to that.
There, there is a section of our code that essentially deals with new projects and projects approved by Plan Development that allows us to go ahead and require a planned development permit for the project as a whole, not necessarily just for the ADU.
Okay, and because this involved adding a new garage, which isn't covered under that, then that's how, that's how that's, okay, thank you. That makes a lot of sense.
Great, thank you. Anybody else like to comment or make a motion on this item?
Sure, I'll make a motion. So I'll move to adopt a resolution, attachment one, recommending that the city council adopt a resolution approving a major modification PLN 2020-85 to a previously approved planned development permit ZC 81-12.
Do we have a second? Great, thank you. Corinne, can we have a roll call, please?
And Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Aye.
Cray?
Aye.
Riblin?
Aye.
Zisser?
Aye.
Chair Ching?
Aye.
Chair Ostrowski?
Aye.
Seven zero.
Thank you. That item passes. The motion is final and less appealed within.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. This item is being recommended to the council, so the decision really hasn't been made at this point.
Okay, so that will be the, the city council meeting in February.
Nas, do you recall when we scheduled that?
February 16th.
February 16th.
Okay, great.
Thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the second item. This is a public hearing to consider the application of Anna Monzo for a site and architectural review permit PLN 2019-235 to allow the construction of a new 3,149 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on property located at 1362 Hacienda Court in the R110 zoning, single-family residence zoning district.
All right, well, thank you.
Yes, and our, our planner is Stephen Rose tonight. Thank you.
Great, thank you, and good evening. As discovered, the project site is 1362 Hacienda Court. The project site is a 7,000 square foot lot located at the end of Hacienda Court, south of West Hacienda Avenue and west of Burrows Road. The property is zoned R110 and located in the San Thomas area neighborhood. The site is currently developed with existing two-story residents, which would be replaced by the proposal, and just as the lot is substandard in terms of lot size in the R110 zone district, which would typically require a 10,000 square foot lot, where 7,000 square feet is provided here. The lot qualifies for an exception to the side rear and lot coverage requirements, and would therefore follow the standards of the district in which it would conform, or in this case, the R16. When we're reviewing it, those were the R16 standards that apply. So in consideration of the applicant's proposal, the applicant is seeking approval of a 3,149 square foot, two-story, single-family residence, which would incorporate a prominent covered front entry, dark brown vertical and dark blue horizontal wood siding, either a black metal standing seam roof or solar glass roof Tesla, depending on budgetary constraints, and a modern glass garage door. Overall, the building would use traditional building forms, including a combination of hip, shed, and gable roofs with minor offsets in the building walls, which serve to accentuate the proposed colors and materials selected. These features would help break up the mass and achieve compatibility to the San Thomas area neighborhood plan. This project was also reviewed by the city's SARC. I have a slide dedicated to that, but I don't want to take away their, their thunder. So with that, I will go ahead and conclude as staff, just indicating that in consideration of the applicant's proposal, that the Planning Commission take the following action, which is to approve the request. And that concludes staff's presentation. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Stephen. And Commissioner Ching, would you like to review the SARC report?
Yeah, sure. I, I think the SARC found it a very nice design, contemporary, but also fitting in with the type of the intent of the San Thomas area plan. I think that's right. So we thought the design was very good. The only item that we did discuss, which was raised by Stephen and shown in this slide here, was the, the area above the garage door, which there's some consideration and discussion about, could we break that up with some relief of a trellis work? And the request to the applicant was to show a trellis work design above the garage door. That's the first time I've seen it, so I think that works really well, in my opinion. Apart from that, it looked really good.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you very much. And do we have any questions for Stephen?
Is, in your opinion, does the shape of the building and its placement on the lot preclude the addition of an ADU later on? Because it's a very oddly shaped lot. Not at all. I mean, our, our ADU standards are very permissive, so in this particular case, I'm going to read off the site plan here. We have a 20-foot rear setback, or an ADU could be as close as four feet to over your property line. So you could put an ADU back there, and it wouldn't be anything that would preclude it. You could also convert interior space and add an ADU that way. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, and I know we have somebody for this item here. Would the applicant like to speak?
Yes, hi, my name is Beth Worsma, Studio 3 Design. I see on the Zoom that Dr. Carey and Dr. Kenji are present also for this presentation, as well as Anna Monzo from my office, and Velamir Sulik are civil engineer. I wanted to just start off by saying I really appreciate how Campbell runs their planning commissions and their SARC or design committees. I, I sit on a lot of these for a lot of townships around you guys, and I, it's, it's amazing to be able to participate in the manner that you've set up, so thank you very much for making something that's very accessible to architects and their clients to be represented at town. I really appreciate that. It's, it's not the norm, and I know it probably took you guys a lot of figuring out, but we really appreciate it just from a professional standpoint.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Yeah, no, it's fantastic. So kudos to you guys. As you know, the lot is uniquely shaped. It really prohibits, you know, a building that isn't kind of long and almost like a train-like, but we worked hard to accommodate the client's scope and also navigate the, the single-story and double-story houses adjacent on either side with the overall mass and, and form. Indeed, it is a more contemporary project, but with kind of more traditional overall forms and massing to navigate the neighborhood design guidelines. We are open to adding the modern interpretation of the trellis work above the garage, as indicated in a slide that Stephen showed. So if that is something that you decide needs to be included, we're, we're certainly open to what we, we showed you, and I, I believe we also had good reception from, from Stephen on that. Ultimately, I'd like to hear what you guys have to say about the house, and then we, we do have a concern about a potential condition related to providing a new ADA curb cut and driveway. We did work with Mr. Seligman via our attorney Bart Heckman from Mattiani, O'Laughlin, and Heckman. And it's not that we are trying to avoid the condition of an ADA curb cut and driveway put on. However, we don't believe that timing is in the best interest in terms of the expense and the work to be done to pull out a relatively recent curb cut sidewalk and driveway that's been put in on a cul-de-sac that is not ADA compliant as well. And rather than that have become a condition of this project, regardless of design, we would like the opportunity to perhaps indemnify the town and have that be something that is brought up later when the rest of the, the local area is brought up to code, and that that could be done at that time. So rather than a condition for a certificate of occupancy, perhaps it can be deemed a condition that is signed off on, and a separate deferred agreement can be made between the client and the town. But I'd like to not get that necessarily entangled at the moment with the overall design concept for this, but I did want to be forthright in speaking to you about that.
Thank you. Does anyone else like to speak on this item?
I'd like to, this is Velamir Sulich. Good evening, Madam Chair and Commissioners. I am Velamir Sulich from People's Associates, engineers for the project. I'd like to address the random conditions of engineering department to bring curb and garden and sidewalk up to the ADA standards for that little tiny portion of a franchise of that particular site. Franchise is only 30 feet, 33 actually. The subdivision of nine lots known as a tract 6863 Hacienda Court was built in 1980, four years ago. So at that time, they comply with all those requirements for the AA and for the curb garden sidewalks. So right now, presently, sidewalk is adjacent to the curb and gutter like monolithic. And it would be really hardship for our clients to bring their portion, whether at the top of the cul-de-sac for 33-foot franchise, to bring it to the ADA standards, when somebody who would drive wheelchair ramp will have to go on the west side of the Hacienda Court for over 200 and something feet with the old standards, and then goes for 30 feet on the new standards, and then go back on the east side for over 200 feet on the old standards for the ADA. And in reality, it doesn't make sense that anybody would drive a wheelchair ramp going all around the cul-de-sac when just recently, city or somebody installed the handicap ramps on returns of Hacienda Court and Hacienda Avenue. So we ask that if we can eliminate that condition of the public works to not bring to the standards, we are unwilling to do this deferred agreement, or when the city of Campbell do the assessment district for the entirely cul-de-sac, we are more than willing to participate, to bring everything to ADA standards in kind of our property. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody, would anybody else like to speak on this item?
Just briefly. I, I drove by yesterday just to look at it, and actually got in a brief conversation with the owner, and you know, we just had a nice conversation. you know, we just had a nice conversation about how he was replacing the house because he's a little short on square footage in the house. The house isn't as big as it looks. So I think the design is nice. It fits right in with the rest of the homes on the cul-de-sac. So I think it's a good design and fits well. So just wanted to comment on that. I also would like to hear from staff on this issue with the ADA and hear what they have to say.
Just real quick, thank you, Commissioners. Just real quick, would Dr. Carey and Dr. Kenji like to speak on this item before we discuss?
We don't have any comment at this time.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question for Beth.
Yeah, basically what Beth said.
Thank you.
Okay, I just wanted to give you a chance, Dr. Kenji, if you wanted to say anything. Say.
No, I mean, you said it very eloquently.
If you guys would like to share screen and bring up the site plan for this conversation, I'm happy to do that as well, or even Stephen can, one or the other.
I have a question for Beth.
Yes, sir.
Beth, can you remind me again your exact role you played in this project?
Yeah, I'm the architectural designer for the project. My firm, Studio 3, does architecture and interior design for residential homes.
Perfect, thank you. So that means I'm directing it in the right direction here, this question. We're talking about the trellis, and I just want to actually get your input on the trellis. Now, obviously, you designed the home and you didn't put it in originally per the request of our department. You guys have gracefully entertained the idea. And when I look at the project and I look at without trellis and with trellis, my mind says, I like trellis. But you didn't put a trellis in first. And so I'm just curious, as being the person who designed everything, what's going through your head with that facade right in the front there above the garage?
That's a good question. So as an architect, we probably as a whole, would approach things from a very purist standpoint in terms of, you know, form. And to me, the form of the mass with the garage and the second-story master suite above it is a little bit more pure. However, we don't really live in a pure world, and a lot of times additive elements like trellises help to navigate. I think the pedestrian experience, by pedestrian, I don't mean the average Joe or silly. I just mean on a human level while walking up to a house and feeling it from a human scale to a two-story residential scale. And I think that, you know, as a person, we're used to seeing some more decorative elements around us that are there. Trellises, to me, are additives and not necessarily pure in terms of modern form, but we worked with Stephen and we discussed with the SARC committee to maybe do one that wasn't quite the clunky à la Tuscan Villa trellis and to do one a little bit more streamlined and square. And that's what you see on the 3D rendering, which would be a hybrid version of accommodating the comment, but in an architectural manner that we felt was deserved for the overall design.
Got it. And I just really wanted to hear your thoughts, because there's something beautiful about architecture and the thought that goes into it. And of course, what you're creating for the homeowner for the rest of their lives. So I appreciate the input. Thank you.
I have a question for the applicants. And this is not a why didn't you do this? This is, I was just curious kind of question. The lot is sort of a trapezoid shape, and the house is like most houses in the shape of a rectangle. Was it considered to make the house, I guess, trapezoid shape to fit the lot? Or is that something that the applicants or that the people who are going to purchase the house would not be interested in?
I think it's a good question. You know, the lot is very unique. Let me see. It is a very, while the lot is trapezoidal, it leaves in the middle once the setbacks are brought in. A very narrow slot, kind of a long and skinny shoebox, if you will, in which to design. If we were to stagger the footprint of the building and try to reflect the pie shape of the lot, it would present a couple of things that I don't think are great in terms of a positive architectural outcome. One is a very complex roof form and a very complex stepped building form that just starts to kind of stair-step out in a trapezoid fashion. And that's both not budget sensitive nor form sensitive to the the shape of spaces as they're felt from the inside, right? I mean, we can't make a little stair-stepped garage. We have code minimums that have to be met for width and depth. And so those things, those very basic parameters set out an overall form that then we entertained a few steps to accommodate and grow spaces because it is so narrow front to back. We did kind of have a few steps. And that was something that was actually important to us to bring in so that it just didn't look like this kind of extruded rectangular form, nor did it have a kind of a winged approach at the end of the cul-de-sac.
Thank you. That is a very thorough answer to my question, and I feel like I know more.
Good. Great. So I had a question for Stephen. Stephen, can you elaborate a little bit on the the curb, the ADU curb and driveway? And that particular condition, because I know we have deferred agreements in the San Thomas area when it's required to put in a sidewalk.
Yeah, I can speak in general terms, understanding I'm not in the public works department. I can't speak maybe as specifically as maybe even our city attorney may on this particular point, who's had extended conversations with their legal team about the condition. But the condition of approval being raised is number 16 in the draft packet. Effectively, whenever a project is building a new, whenever you have a proposal to build a new home, there is a requirement that we bring the frontage up to code. So in this particular case, our code has changed since whenever the current improvements in the frontage were originally constructed, which now require an ADA accessible driveway apron. So the requirement is that instead of you just having a, like a sidewalk that kind of then angles down as you cross the apron of the driveway approach, that you would actually provide a little bit of a a level landing, I'll call it like that, using almost a building code term, behind the driveway apron so that it's flush and it's level. So the area of disagreement, I think in this particular case, was whether or not the city would be requiring a the ADA upgrade, that pretty much frontage improvements to be installed for a new project to be built up with current requirements, if there was one that had been improved in the past. So the argument there was once improved, always improved kind of argument. And if the city changes its standards from time to time, isn't then the city, should we never then ever require the improvements to be installed to current code as it may be at the time? So I believe that that was the basis of the disagreement. I believe that the city attorney had, you know, expressed the city's position that it is a requirement by our code. It's required of all other properties. And although I think that was where it had been left off, is that the city was taking the position that it was a requirement and that there wasn't a, my understanding, a waiver process, but that's specifically where I'd actually maybe ask Bill Seligman, our city attorney, to chime in if there is a waiver process or if they could do a deferred improvement agreement, or if that's even something standard or typical in this type of situation.
Yes.
Thank you, Stephen.
Yeah, and to be honest, it didn't dawn on me that this was the project that I had talked to Mr. Heckman about many, many months ago. But essentially, yes, there are, there is a waiver provision in Title 11, I believe, of the municipal code that can be followed. That has not been, there is not an application to do that before the planning commission right now. There also is the option of a deferred improvement agreement. It was public works position that that would be cumbersome, given that the neighboring properties are not likely to redevelop for a considerable amount of time, and you lose track of those agreements. Any money that was set aside by way of a bond or something usually is inadequate by the time that you call the deferred improvement agreement. And sometimes collecting sufficient funds to do the larger project at that point in time becomes difficult.
Yeah, also add anecdotally, I had a recollection of a conversation that, you know, when we typically deal with this type of, you know, improvement, you could sometimes have a situation where you've got a corner lot. That corner lot's being required to improve 100 linear feet on one street and additional 60 to 70 feet on another frontage, another street. This particular lot is, as we discussed, it's at the end of a cul-de-sac. It's a, I think I'm looking at the radius, it's 43 feet long is the segment along the edge of that edge. It's not a very long area to improve. And it's consistent with the scope of work. So if there's any nexus argument of building a new home, requiring this type of improvement, the public works department had felt at the time that it was reasonable and adequate for what was entailed.
Sorry, what's a nexus argument?
I don't want to get into Nolan Dolan or any of that kind of stuff, but the idea is that if you have an exaction requirement on a project, that it's at least proportional to the scope of work.
Oh, so like if somebody's building a house, you can't say you need to replace the entire highway next to your house or something like that?
That's a good example. We're building, yeah, a pedestrian overpass of that highway.
Okay.
Chair Strasky, I might recommend that we see if we can close a public hearing so that we can further discuss amongst ourselves. If anybody else wants to talk to applicant, otherwise we can move forward.
I guess I've got a question for the applicant. Their concern over doing the curb cut, is this financial, just the cost? I didn't quite understand what.
Yeah, I think, well, I think it's twofold. One is the cost. You know, to Stephen's point, the frontage is very narrow and you know, we basically be required to essentially rebuild the whole entire driveway curb cut sidewalk and essentially reconnect this new ADA standard to some non-standard or at that point, then very substandard, according to current code, construction and best practices from a sidewalk curb and gutter standpoint. Whereas the whole entire goal of this project from the beginning was because of the weird lot shape and massive setback offsets and tiny building area was to maintain the existing driveway and access. It is at the end of a cul-de-sac. Logic says there is two existing ADA curb cuts at either end of the front of the cul-de-sac. If someone needed accessibility, they would cut across the cul-de-sac rather than meandering around said cul-de-sac. I mean, that's just logic speaking at some point. And that really, why are we, why are we creating a condition where we're bringing new up to code to create an engineer of detail that ties us into what is quote "not to code"? And then I do take issue with the public works notion that they don't believe that there's any likelihood that either home on either side may be brought up to code currently, and since code constantly changes every two years or so, who's to say that then by the time those two houses are brought up to code, the current house is no longer in code? And we're just constantly then in a battle of, you know, redoing random pieces that don't tie together and just causing an excessive waste of money and time in terms of rebuilding, when it's really an illogical comment.
Could I interrupt something, please?
Sure, Valamir.
I just listened to attorney, and I think if I understood attorneys, it is somewhere in the city codes that we can do deferred agreement because it doesn't make sense. It's not common sense. It's not common engineering practice that you go 220 feet on the west side, what is not ADA approved, and then you go for 33 feet on the ADA approved, and then go back 220 feet on non-ADA-approved sidewalk. Doesn't make sense. Plus, it's a hardship on our client. These things will cost over $25,000. For what purpose? I don't think so. Anybody visiting our clients in a handicap, in a wheelchair, will go all the way from Hacienda Avenue, go up and down, up and down driveways and sidewalks, and then have a 30-feet comfortable driving on wheelchair. It doesn't make sense. So I really ask planning commission to help us to waive this condition. It doesn't make sense, but we are willing to do deferred agreement. We are willing to put even cash bond or bond in future if a city requires us to do improvements for the ADA improvement on the Charlie cul-de-sac. We are more than willing to do that. But at this stage, it doesn't make sense. It's not good engineering. It's not, it doesn't make sense.
Okay, thank you. Bill, did you have something to add to that?
I did. I just wanted to point, I mean, I really can't deal with the engineering aspects. I'm not an engineer, but if the issue is financial, that, I mean, that really is not a very solid position because they're going to have to pay for it eventually, and it's going to be more expensive later than it is now.
And if I, Bill, if I might ask, just to kind of settle the matter, I mean, I think you'd mentioned earlier there might be a waiver process contained in Title 11, but that's not for them right now, was a part of our public notice. But the applicant were to want to pursue that, I'm not sure what the procedure would be, but I'm not sure if that's even an item which the planning commission would necessarily waive. Is that at this meeting at this time?
I do not believe the planning commission can waive it at this time since there hasn't been an application submitted for waiver under chapter or Title 11.
So, you know, that it's a little bit distressing to me to hear that for the first time, that that's what we could have done, especially when we engaged an attorney to speak directly with you and have a couple of months of conversation around it. I mean, had we known that we could have applied for a waiver and then had that be approved as part of this application, we certainly would have done so. Perhaps we can move from waiver to deferred as a method for us to continue to advance the permit set, because what I don't want to do is get hung up in an argument over this, but I'd rather have the opportunity to continue to work with you, Mr. Seligman, and the public works department in order to create either the right language around a deferred agreement or a waiver. But I would like the house to pass tonight through planning commission so I can move on to the building department. It's been a long process in this, and I really don't want to hold the whole house up anymore.
Thank you. Director Kormoyan, could you weigh in on the process here?
Not at an open forum. I think at this point, unless you have additional questions for the applicant, I would suggest we close the public hearing and then bring it back to the commission. We could have a little bit more straightforward, uninterrupted conversation regarding, you know, why a city would prefer an improvement versus to delay it. So.
I would just like to mention for the record that I did discuss the process for getting a waiver with Mr. Heckman.
Okay, thank you. Okay, with that, then I will go ahead and close the hearing and.
Before we close the public hearing, I hate to, and I want to hear, I don't quite get it, I have to say, on the ADA issue. I don't know if Beth or Mr. the other gentleman who spoke can. What exactly are we talking about? What would we have to do with this condition 16 in the public works for the frontage improvements versus what you are applying, proposing? What's the difference?
Well, in our current application, we've developed engineering to do, to satisfy the condition, to create a non-common sense ADA curb cut and new driveway along our frontage and redo that. What we're asking is if that can be, if that one condition can be deferred. Again, we're not asking for a full pass on it. We're not asking for it to go away. We just would like it to be separated out from our application so that our application can continue through the building department and begin construction. The driveway is one of the last things that will be constructed on this project, and I really don't want to see the project hung up for a potential to process through a waiver or deferred agreement between town and owner. um, between town and owner, uh, for the, the, the curb cut and driveway. That's the only but I, I can't move to building without approval from you guys. So I'm, I'm trying to, to manage also a more timely permit process.
Uh, so, so right now what you've proposed does meet this.
Correct.
All right, okay, I, I did. Okay. Yeah, thank you. I just wanted to ask you whether the public hearing must, must go open. Thank you, Commissioners.
Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, I will go ahead and close the, uh, public hearing and open it up to the commission. And, uh, who would like to start us off here? Maybe, um, Director Kormoyan?
Yeah, let me, let me start us off. Let me document this. Okay, so requiring public improvements is, is a common approach to, um, improving the, the built environment. Our code, our general plan all speaks to the need of improving, uh, frontages and even off-site improvements. Um, that may not be directly physically attached, but are associated, you know, such as when we were looking at, uh, the In-N-Out Burger, for example. Uh, there's a possibility that an intersection may need to be rebuilt, even though it's further away and not, you know, immediately adjacent. In this case, we're talking about a driveway and sidewalk. This is a very, um, common condition that we place on most brand-new projects like this. And, and what Stephen was talking about was this notion of degree of requirement, uh, versus cost, uh, you know, um, of the improvement in relation to the house in this case. Um, and in this case, the, there is a strong relationship between the cost of $25,000 improvement versus a $500,000 house, that, that type of thing. Nevertheless, you know, you as a commission need to be aware that your staff does fully vet out these considerations. So do we accept a deferred improvement agreement? The city has done that. Or do we require the improvement? And there's usually a reason why the city would rather accept the improvement versus delay it. We've all seen, uh, a sidewalk to nowhere. Where you see a rural streetscape and then all of a sudden there's a sidewalk because someone had the, the belief that, you know, eventually they'll connect. Um, I understand what the applicant's saying, um, but in, and I have to say for honesty, I I was not in the conversations with the Public Works Director, but I do have the full faith and confidence that the senior engineer did work with the Public Works Director to determine that there was a need here. So what you're hearing commission is that, well, you know, engineering-wise, it doesn't really make sense to improve one component of the sidewalk system because it's in the middle and on either ends, they're non-compliant, therefore the public's ability to access the sidewalk is already hampered, so why not just delay it? I guess that is a, that is a consideration, um, but once again, your staff has vetted that out and they feel this is the time to do it. It's a, it's a short distance, let's connect it now and not worry about deferring it later. So they, they made that call, so, you know, right now you're not in a position to delay it or remove it, or I don't know how you can find it consistent with the city's general plan. I was thinking through the conversation of reworking that condition at the very end, put a little statement that says, uh, a deferred agreement may be considered, um, if, if the Public Works Director accepts such an agreement. But once again, I think they've already vetted that out. They're very thorough. So you would be basically getting a recommendation that this project shouldn't go forward unless you have that condition. That's really what's before you right now.
And if, if I may add, I, I was checking the code while, while, um, Director Kormoyan was talking. And the decision on whether or not to allow for a deferred improvement agreement rests with the city engineer. It is not a decision for the planning commission. Um, in order to get a, around, uh, a, a decision by the city engineer to require the improvements, you would have to go through either an appeal or an exception process that's set forth in the code.
And could I ask, um, if there was a deferment or a waiver, I'm saying it should be, but if there was, was the liability on the city? In terms of, you know, we had the opportunity to improve it, and I know we, we expect our city attorney, I know there's some legal firms that make money, make a living out of taking people to court on ADA. So I'm just wondering if that's a, a liability.
That, that is a very sensitive issue, one that I, I don't know that I want to get into a lot of detail in, in an open forum. But, uh, there have been some major lawsuits, uh, throughout the state at various points in time uh, to, uh, to, uh, get cities to, uh, move forward with, uh, up, upgrading their, um, uh, ADA compliance. Generally, as long as the city has a plan to do that, that is satisfactory. But I suppose someone could argue that we're departing from our plan if we don't require the improvements at this time. Uh, that's probably about as much as I can say off the cuff on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, so it sounds like, um, to do a deferred agreement, that's really not in our purview. That's, uh, sits with the city engineer, right?
Correct.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, so let's, um, let's start off on the, um, the, the topic of the design and what is in our purview. So who would like to start us off there?
I think the, uh, that Sark did a really good, uh, good job by suggesting the trellis of the garage. Um, in general, I think ornamentation is nice, buildings should be beautiful, and that's really compatible with the modern style. Like, it's not a big change, but it really, I, I definitely prefer that look. And also, uh, the possibility of a solar glass roof is pretty cool.
Thank you.
Chair, I'll, I'll speak next. I felt that the trellis is a nice addition to the facade. It breaks up the kind of vertical plane there. Thought it, um, looks appropriate with the kind of modern and kind of material use. I think it ties in. Uh, all of the home itself looks, uh, pretty great. I think it'll fit in, yeah, even though it has a little more modern appeal. But I think it'll fit in the neighborhood well and, um, should make the, uh, the owner, you know, give them that added square footage they're looking for. Or a future, um, owner, added square footage. I, I even like the garage door. So I supported the project, uh, you know, in the conditions that are set by staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Ruwan.
I'll just echo what, uh, my fellow commissioners just said, 100%. I like the trellis, really nice job on that. I think it's a nice addition. And I like the project. I like the design, beautiful house.
Great, thank you, Commissioner. Great. Um, anybody else would like to comment on this?
I, I just like to ask a question, even though I guess the whole ADA thing is got to be worked out with the Public Works Department. I'm, I'm looking at the streetscape rendering on Figure 2 and you know, it, um, I, I don't know what page, but, um, it's 58. Um, and so I just like, I, I would just like to, a clarification on what is involved in upgrading the sidewalk, the curb side, uh, to ADA standards. What, what's the difference between what's there and what would need to be there? I don't need a long explanation, but maybe somebody could, uh.
If you look at page, oh, 89 of the packet, there's a, a detail, um, drawing of the new driveway.
Unfortunately, it looks like this is cut off. Um, can you guys actually see the bottom of the screen here?
Barely. And I think, I think actually. Oh, I'm sorry, the public hearing is closed. Oh, sorry. Thank you. Go ahead, Stephen.
Give me one moment. I'm gonna do a, uh, a more expansive view of the same. You guys can see the whole edge.
I think the, the short answer, Commissioners, is this, sir, is that the walking surface needs to have a certain slope and the apron itself hinders that. And it creates an uneven surface where someone that's navigating now is navigating, you know, going downhill or uphill. So the, the ADA, uh, driveway basically moves that walking surface so it's constantly level. That's the, that's the short answer.
Okay, and then, and then there's a slight for the, i- i- if, if you basically raise it to be flat, then there's a slightly different it, uh, curbing to the, to the street. It, it, uh.
Well, effectively, I mean, effectively you have a monolithic, so it's right up against the, the, the back of curb right now. It's rounding the corner of the cul-de-sac. What happens is you have this, this kind of like little flares, diagonal walkway path that lead up to that level surface. Director Kormoyan was mentioning a moment ago, which is then would continue the sidewalk behind the initial lift as you're driving up that, that apron. That's kind of, I, I wish I could show the exhibit. That's why I was trying to pull it up here on screen.
So, so that, that 43 feet of, of, of sidewalk and curb would just be replaced, right?
Right. You'd be, you'd be kind of demolishing the part with this monolithic up against the back of curb, relocating it back a little bit further. But it'd still be a contiguous, a continuous concrete surface for that whole area. It's just a matter of the leveling of it. What, what planes of it are flat were great.
Okay.
But it's not the entire sidewalk on the property, right? It's just kind of the sidewalk at the driveway and then the region that connects it to the existing sidewalk, right?
Correct. So I mean, the idea, it can't be disconnected from the existing sidewalk, so you're having to conform it. Would be the term we use. I mean, we're conforming this ADA approach with the existing monolithic sidewalk that occurs on either side.
That's not true.
Great.
Yeah.
Thank you, Stephen.
Thanks. You know, and my only other comment on it is, and again, um, I mean, I understand the, uh, the, um, the architects and the, uh, the, the designer, uh, whoever else spoke on this in terms of the common sense aspect of it, that it's this one hot, this only this one house at the end of the cul-de-sac and that nothing else is going to change. And, you know, we could be, you know, 20 years from now, it could end up being totally uncompliant except for that one area. So I, I kind of get their point of view on that. So I, I, I certainly understand it from a common sense point of view is that, uh, you know, it's, it's like one little piece of, uh, uh, ADA accessible sidewalk on an entire cul-de-sac that, uh, um, it's, it's, it, it, it. And I, I appreciate the ADA aspects of, of, uh, what, uh, what, uh, people are trying to do with complying, but, um, yeah, I, I certainly get the, um, concern from a common sense point of view that, uh, that, uh, I, I, I'm not quite sure why would cost $25,000 to do the curb, but I don't understand construction that well. So, um, so I just, I just, uh, wanted to get a better understanding of what's involved and, uh, you know, the, the overall design of the house is great, as I said before, and I, I'd, I'd be definitely, uh, uh, vote in favor of the trellis. Uh, otherwise, uh, I would hope that uh, they could be, you could work something out in terms of, of dealing with this ADA compliant requirement on the curb.
Well, I think we all had a good chance to chime in here and, and I guess I'll finish up by saying that, again, we all agree at the beautiful home. Hopefully they enjoy it for many years to come. I'm glad they're able to work on the trellis idea, uh, that we put forth. Everything looks fantastic, um, and everything is within our purview, uh, from now forward. So I would like to make a resolution, uh, make a motion to adopt resolution. PLN 2019-235 approving that site and architectural review permit to allow the construction of a new 3149 square foot, two-story, single-family residence on property located 1352 Hossi in the court.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Corinne, can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, we can. Commissioners Bookbinder?
Aye.
Fullville?
Aye.
Ray?
Aye.
Givlin?
Aye.
Yes, sir?
Aye.
Vice Chair Qing?
Aye.
Arrow Astravsky?
Aye.
Arrow.
Okay, thank you. Um, that motion passes unanimously. Um, and the planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within 10 calendar days. Thank you very much. Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice evening.
Thank you. So our, um, our new business is the, um, housing unit production report by Planner Stephen Rose.
Thank you again. Good evening. Let me go ahead and, uh, pull up my slide here.
Thank you.
I have a little, I mean, it is a new business item, but I have a very, very basic presentation, just going to kind of convey the facts covered in the memo, just for mainly, mainly for, uh, uh, discussion purposes. So, um, at our last, at our last planning mission meeting on January 12th, the planning commission had requested that staff prepare a memo just simply compiling information on the number of accessory dwelling units that the city produces and how long it takes to secure those permits. So, um, really recognizing, we didn't, we weren't provided a really a date range to pull those numbers from, but recognizing.
Sorry, Stephen, are you sharing a slide or not?
I, I should be. Are you guys not seeing?
I see it.
I can see it.
You do?
Yeah.
Might be your, your particular view.
Yeah. Okay, there we go. Sorry about that.
So, um, recognizing we, we didn't really have a date range to go off of, we, we figured that the, the commission might be interested in seeing how many new ADUs have been granted since our last ADU ordinance was, uh, adopted. That was November 19, 2019. The City Council, when we repealed and replaced our last ADU ordinance. So really, since that date and 2019 range of November 2019 to January 2021, this month, uh, the city has seen, uh, a number of applications submitted of 88. Uh, we've issued 77 permits, um, received within, within that time period, with an average processing time of 51 days. Um, the reason why I like to say, um, these, all these numbers, they all come with asterisks. Best way I could, best way I could describe them. Um, while the number of applications is rather straightforward, yes, 88 were, were, had been received between that date period, that, that, that time period. Uh, the number of issued permits, that was also pulled just between that date range. That means you would have had to have not only submitted your permit since November 2019, but we would have also had an issue that, that permit submitted after that date until present day. So it's very possible we might have had a permit that had been received in 2018 or earlier in 2019, and we've issued it since that time period. So that number is probably a little bit low, to be honest. And, uh, in regard to average processing time, although it's 51 days, um, that varies quite considerably. I think in the memo, I indicated it can be as little as one day, but on outlier, right, 200 days. I mean, operationally, when somebody submits for a, an accessory dwelling unit, uh, the date of the submit, we're having to vet the permit for basic adequacy and collecting fees. So we, we assess fees on that permit. It might be tied up with other applications as well. So it might not just be an ADU. It might be an ADU with a house or subdivision with multiple houses and multiple ADUs that are all part of the same project. And we require, we require a deed restriction to be reported. So sometimes there's this back and forth, what I call tolling. The idea that the city might, when, how many days is the ball in the city's court? How long does it take us to process a permit? Versus how long does it take us to, um, respond to something that an applicant has given us? So, um, that, that's why I'm saying that, that, that timeline is a little bit misleading. In all likelihood, even the, the permits which take only a day. Um, those are probably permits which were, had, that, which were probably canceled and, uh, restarted and then issued the day that they, they came back in. So I just wanted to keep that in mind. Um, that said, just in terms of a broader conversation about housing unit production, we thought that, uh, the commission might be interested in just understanding, how many units do we produce? The commission might be interested in just understanding how many units do we produce in a given year? And, um, uh, while we don't have figures just yet for this year, uh, we do do a regional housing needs allocation. Um, our annual housing report, uh, annually, our next one is going to be in March. And, uh, as of twenty nineteen, as you're kind of seeing here, we had produced thirty-six housing units. So this table, what it does is Rena is a, it's kind of like a state mandated number of units, which the city must produce or should produce. In various income categories, it's broken up into very low, low, moderate, above moderate. And it's really broken up and it's an eight-year reporting cycle. So in this case, we're going from twenty fifteen to twenty twenty-three. This is our eight-year, um, Rena reporting cycle. So as of twenty nineteen. Uh, we should have really achieved about fifty-five percent of our, um, our obligation across all the categories. But as you're kind of seeing here, we've actually exceeded, I gotta move the little window here. We've actually exceeded our moderate count years in advance. Or above moderate, rather. We're a hundred and four percent compliant, where we should only be at about fifty-five percent. But we are falling short of our obligation in these, uh, other categories. And, um, I, I, I would mention that just kind of looking ahead. That, uh, right now, if you total all these columns, um, the two fifty-three, the one thirty-eight, the one fifty-one and three ninety-one. The city's total obligation was to provide, it was nine hundred and, if I have it in my notes, nine hundred and thirty-three housing units. Across all those categories. Under Rena six, our obligation is going to be going up even higher. We're looking at probably around two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven units or a three hundred nineteen percent increase over Rena five. So, yeah, I, 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 I mean, unfortunately, just because of the way that we tally this information. We don't have all the, the breakdowns of how long does it take to process an individual permit, just given the number of variables. That would go into such a, a request, but we can always dig into any given permit at any given time and, uh, right, provide that analysis. And, uh, we, we've currently, we've recently transitioned to a new permit software called MyGovernment Online. And it's our goal as staff to provide better metrics out of that in years to come, but it's gonna, it's gonna take time for us to compile and to prepare. The types of customer reports that would be needed to, um, run like a, a number, like how long does the permit take? In the traditional sense. So that's, uh, really it. And I, I, I guess I'd bring it back to the, the commission for discussion or questions.
Thank you very much, Stephen. Um, that is a really great analysis and it's nice to see so many ADU applications coming through. I know, um, many of us were on the planning commission in November of two thousand and nineteen. And, you know, for the year or two before that, that we were working on, um, changing the, uh. The zoning to allow more ADUs than there were a number of discussions and we heard, um. A tremendous amount of public input and comments as to, um, people who really wanted additional flexibility. And opportunity to build the ADUs for, um, different circumstances that they laid out. So it's great that we were able to move that forward and it's really nice to see that, um, that people are coming forth and, uh. And building these ADUs. Um, so thank you for that. Um, I did have a, a question on the Rena. So you said, um, the next Rena cycle, the number of units that we'll have to build. Will be an increase of three hundred percent. Is that right?
Uh, yeah, so three hundred nineteen percent increase. So that's what the city would need to plan for. Cities can't control how many units are actually built or produced. But in terms of our housing element update, we'll need to identify sites which could accommodate that many numbers.
Okay. And then in terms of the, um, the very low through moderate income level. Is that, um, kind of the relative ratio going to stay the same?
You, you know, the, the numbers are still up in the air. I don't have a final set of numbers, but yeah, they're, they're commensurate. I don't think we're gonna see. You know, suddenly a huge upswell of units in the very low where.
Yeah.
Percentage to percentage increase would occur.
Okay.
There's, there's definitely be a change, but I, I couldn't speak to the exact percentage change. It's not going to be significant.
And, you know, I know you, you haven't done the, probably the detailed analysis of my next question. But how are we stacking up relative to other cities in terms of these lower income level categories?
Uh, it is actually the infographic I'd be, I maybe share after the meeting, uh, just to the commission that. Uh, it's a good question's been asked, uh, and somebody's actually put, I mean, I think it's either state agency or a, a private group. Has actually taken all these, these regional housing annual reports and compiled that data and has a, a graphic of the state of California. Showing exactly how many cities are actually satisfying their numbers. And it's very low. I, I'd actually say ninety-nine percent. Something in that, right? I think, I think, you know, Beverly Hills hit their number because they only had to produce one, one unit. In the Rena eight, 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 Rena's five cycle, but I, I, other communities, um, are coming up shy. So we're not unique in that regard, maybe the way I characterize it. And most cities aren't, are actually generally hitting their above moderate numbers like we are. But, uh, hitting those lower income categories are very difficult. And we do try to get closer to them by having. Uh, like an inclusionary housing ordinance like we do, we're actually even arguably progressive in that regard compared to some other cities. We also encourage density bonus projects, which also result in the provision of additional very low units typically. So those two type, those two ordinances and our promotion of them, inclusionary density bonus, do help us achieve this. Order to reach the arena allocation, we'd need to produce a ton more housing.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, if I could, if I could jump in there, you know, I've always said to my staff, you know, we don't really need the state of California to. Tell us that we need to build housing. If we really wanted to build housing, we can make it happen, right? So we don't need the rules. Just let's make it happen. Let's do it. What you're seeing with inclusionary housing is that it's a tool, but it's a tool that. Historically doesn't work. I mean, it, you're never going to reach your target because housing developers need to make a profit. And they're going to come in and, and only build affordable housing at the increment that they have to. They're, they're not going to come in and just build a hundred percent affordable housing. We're going to have that meeting, uh. Let's see, when is that meeting? So that's going to be on February tenth. That we're going to have this round table where we're going to talk with, um, uh, affordable housing developers about, you know, what's. What's preventing them from building housing in Campbell and, and what are the obstacles that you see? Uh, it's usually going to be money. That's, it's, it's always money, uh, and in free land is money. Um, you know, permit process is money as well, I guess. Time is money. So it'll be interesting to hear what that conversation, uh, will lead. But I think the, the issue here, at least what we wanted to, to talk about tonight was the fact that our. The efforts that you made commission, the city council have, have now demonstrated that we're able to produce. Six to seven, you know, building permits for ADUs a month. It's pretty good. It's, it's really good. It's more than we've had before. Um, the problem though with ADUs is they're not considered affordable. So they're not hitting those categories. Um, and we, in fact, there, there's state law that says we can't require them to, to be affordable. So hopefully with this next housing element cycle, because the laws are always changing. But somehow we get credit for those categories that are really hard to reach. You know, maybe moderate, uh, or, or low income. Very low income is, is a difficult one.
I had a question related to the ADU and the housing production. I, I just heard what you said, Director Cimoyan, that the ADUs typically cost more. In, in this kind of environment to build, that they can't be moderate or even low. But how do we, how do we measure that? When they come in with the building permit, are we asking how much they cost and then that's how you set it? Or we're asking how much they'll rent for?
No, if you, if you recall early on, we, and this was before the law actually now prevents it. We were talking about this notion of allowing ADUs with a condition that they be made affordable.
Right.
A certain income level. And that would have been worked into the ordinance. That would have been part of the provisions. But so it has nothing to do with issuance of a building permit. Has anything to do with zoning?
Well, how do we, I guess what I'm asking is if, if someone rents their ADU out to their son for three hundred bucks. I'm just making up a number. That doesn't count for affordable?
How do you measure that?
Yeah.
Right. It, it still wouldn't count. It doesn't, it's, it's not the person that, that the unit is, is, um, housing. It's the unit itself.
Understood.
The, yeah.
Thank you.
I can expand just briefly. I mean, what we're talking about is in that prior ordinance, we're talking about having a deed restriction.
Yes.
So for, for HCD to give you, for, for us to get credit in Arena, it would need to be deed restricted.
I see.
Fifty-five years. And these units are not being deed restricted. So as. You're going into the above moderate category.
The only way to get the credit is for the deed restriction or some kind of covenant that requests, uh, rent to be locked to a certain rate or something like that.
Yeah, some cities have argued that by doing studies that they can demonstrate, um. That the, that the units being produced, that the ADUs are affordable by design or by their size or by the community demographic, like. But that's something that's neither here nor there right now. It's something that might be studied for our next housing.
But I, I do believe, Stephen, there is, uh, some legislation that allows us to capture a proportion. Of the ADUs at, at a certain income level. We'll look at, we'll look into that further.
I have a couple of questions. First of all, thank you, uh, Stephen, for putting this together. This is very, very helpful. Just to, to double check something, um, you said that the, the real word processing time goes from like one day. To two, over two hundred days. Um. Are we compliant with the sixty-day timeline that AB sixty-eight requires?
So what I would indicate is that probably eighty-six, I mean, all these laws and legislation, they need to account for toll. The idea that if an applicant submits a permit, what I'm counting is day one on that permit is the day that the permit is received. We then have a requirement, let's say we impose on the applicant that now we've identified your permit and we've taken it as a package. And here's a fee that you need to pay. It's a five hundred dollars to process it. They could then sit on that permit for a hundred and ninety-eight days. Well, let's say, in theory, right? And then, um, my, my calculation, the one I'm giving you there is then representative of that. It's not necessarily representative of the time that the city's taking to process it. Because I'm saying that fundamentally, the number fifty-five days is somewhat flawed. Because of that information not being able to be readily collected, compiled and displayed to you.
So it's, it's from the time when they deliver some form of application, not a completed application and the time when we approve or deny it. Which is not the same timeline that AB sixty-eight is specific about.
Correct.
Um, considering, um, the upcoming housing element, uh, going from Rena five to Rena six. If we have an unbuilt allocation from this cycle, does it roll over until the next cycle?
You mean in terms of.
I don't believe so, Stephen.
It's not, no.
I don't believe so.
There is, there's a six-month period of time where units produced at the end of this cycle count towards the next cycle, but that's not what you're talking about. It's not like we have an increased accrual. There was talk about doing that, but they didn't end up doing it. As a way of penalizing communities that don't comply.
Okay. So.
What is the penalty for not meeting these numbers?
There's actually, there's actually a few. Um, I couldn't tell you all of them offhand, but the most notable one would be that projects qualifying. We, we suddenly subject ourselves to different legislative rules, which would allow for projects that, uh. Uh, meet all objective standards, uh, from being, you know. How do I put this? Like a qualifying SB thirty-five project, which is again, an ordinance we don't really have right now. So I, I don't really want to get into that just yet. It's, it's on our work plan. We'll be presenting it to you, but that would be an example of a, um. Uh, the type of development which could be kind of forced forward with expedited timelines if we don't have, we're not satisfied with, you know, occupation.
Thank you.
I had another question. So, uh, looking at this, the average since November twenty nineteen is one point twenty-four approvals or one point forty-two applications per week. Is that representative of the current rate? And, um, yeah, I just remember, um, at the last meeting. I, I understand this is just not the cuff estimate, but have we, are we actually going at three to four per week now or is that, um, about the, the rate which we're going?
I mean, I didn't calculate the number that way. Uh, our, uh, Director Cimoyan can, I mean, we have a staff agenda which we circulate weekly. We typically see at least one or two ADUs every other week on our weekly staff agenda.
Sometimes three. Yeah, so we, we're getting a fair share. So.
I would say the biggest change that we've seen is that when we reduced the minimum lot size from ten thousand square feet to effectively zero. That suddenly opened up a ton of opportunity for ADUs in the community that had the biggest material impact. And that's why we're starting to see so many more.
Okay. And when, when was that? Was that in November twenty nineteen?
Correct. That was as part of the, the new, uh, peeled and replaced, uh, ADU ordinance. It effectuated that. Also had to reduce the, uh, rear setback down to four feet. And that also applies in areas where it was previously requiring twenty feet. So that made it a lot more permissive. But there, there probably those two things among the biggest changes. I mean, parking code changes too. I mean, it all added up. So the combination of all those factors has made it a lot easier and we are seeing a lot more of the result.
Stephen, does anything stand out in your mind if you were to, you know, kind of summarize trends in terms of what you're seeing with ADUs? Are they mostly in the Santa Moss area? Are they mostly, um, you know, attached or? Are they, is it really just very variable?
I probably see, we do, we do see the majority of them on larger lots, um, like those within characterized by the Santa Moss area. I mean, single-family lots is where we see the majority of ADUs as opposed to conversion inside of other types of development products. Uh, beyond that, I couldn't really carry a comment.
So when.
I figured by your pause, it was probably pretty variable.
It's variable. Yeah. So I'm, I'm the one that actually assigns the different applications when they come in and it's the full gamut. It's detached units, it's JADUs, there's garage conversions. It's, it's really the full gamut of, of opportunity to add another, you know, housing product.
That's great. Good.
Uh, just a quick, I, I don't want to put you on the spot too much here, but in, in, in back to the housing unit production. First of all, I assume that that, those numbers are the completion of the project, based on the completion of the project. That it's done?
No, it's based on issuance. So what's kind of interesting again is depending on what snapshot shot in time you try to take a, a number. So for H, so for the regional housing needs allocation, it's just based on issuance date. If you issued a permit, let's say for instance, that had a. Uh, a requirement or restriction on it, that it made it very low. Then that one unit would count as one very low unit produced in that year, so long as you issued it. It might actually be finished and final in a different year.
Okay. So the thirty-six in two thousand and nineteen are, how many were?
Issued.
Issued. Okay. Do you have, do you have a sense at all in terms of what's in the pipeline? You know, for twenty twenty, I mean, twenty twenty had to be a bad year, right?
Yeah, I mean, I, I actually have another slide I can maybe share. I mean, it kind of, it's kind of scratching at the point that you're touching on that.
Um, we, we were hoping that the Crestly Homes project was going to move forward. In fact, they, they told us that they were going to more than likely be pulling permits in, uh, January or February. But they, they delayed that. But we're not seeing too many big projects move, you know, move forward at this, at this time. Uh, there is some interest over there at, uh, Santa Moss Expressway in Hamilton. Um, they're changing the general plan to allow housing there and the council will be, uh, considering, uh, authorizing an application on that. Um, but for the most part, it's, it's, you know, really, really small things like Rincon Avenue has nine units. Mozart had what, twenty-five, twenty-six units. It's the, the smaller ones that we're getting.
Yeah, I'll, I'll just again mention the fact that, you know, come March, we are going to be producing a new version of this data. But this is in twenty nineteen, although we're seeing that we issued thirty-six building permits and those are the ones which, you know. Counted a hundred percent in our above moderate category. We were seeing seventy-five new units in our planning approvals. Because those generally don't translate in that given year, but in twenty twenty, we'll probably see or realize a greater percentage of those units. Right? So this is kind of why it's, usually it goes through the planning process first and then you see the building permit submitted. Might take some time like the Crestly project, which was just mentioned. You go through a building permit submittal, review and issuance. And again, it's always based on the issuance date. Again, I mean, this, this kind of provides a, a kind of a different view of that data. I mean, we, we, planning had actually approved, this could be single-family homes, what have you, 75 new units. We issued the 36, but then we had actually finalized in 2019, 45 units. Again, just a different way of seeing the same data.
And all those, all those very low, well moderate, those ones, one, two, two, threes, fours, the, in, in those years, those are all low market rate units as part of a bigger development?
Yeah, I can't think of a project in recent memory that ever just came forward as an individual project that included a lower, below, it's part of a, usually a 10-unit or greater subdivision.
Stephen and Paul, I just want, just to clarify, but I, I was under the impression that the ADU units don't count for anything in terms of the RENA numbers. Isn't that, isn't that true or no?
They account for the above moderate. So above moderate is arena number.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I was gonna ask you, and you kind of mentioned it, so, and I was, so I looked at 88, 88 applications since November 2019, and I thought that was pretty good. And Director Kermoyen and Stephen said that was pretty good too. But I, I know it's kind of subjective. If we had not done the new ordinance in November 2019, if everything had been the same, how many ADU applications would we have expected, like just a handful kind of a thing or?
Yeah, yeah, we were.
Right?
What do you think, Stephen? We, we were getting maybe three or four a year applications?
Okay, alright.
Yeah, I, I will also mention the fact that we had kind of this cruel period there too, just before the adoption of the ordinance. There were a number of parties that were interested in our ordinance being passed, so their permits came in right after the adoption. So we kind of saw a spike. I don't know if that's gonna be a trend going year over year in the future. But yeah, I mean, in past years, we didn't see hardly any, I mean, three or four units a given year, just like.
You know, I know it's a statewide issue, but in terms of the, of the issue that we're all trying to solve, getting more affordable housing, I don't know if there's any movement statewide to, to start counting ADUs in the low, in the lower income units. It seems like that would be more fair in terms of the actual picture of what we're producing, but.
There are some, some cities do provide certain incentives. I don't know exactly off the top of my head, but I'm aware that certain cities do provide certain incentives for people who build ADUs to make them deed restricted, which does make them count as below market rate affordable housing. I don't think we have a particular program to do that. But, and, and you'd have to have some sort of significant incentive because you're asking a small-time landlord to forego a big chunk of the rent they receive.
Yeah, that was a big discussion we had when, in 2019, when we were working through this issue. So we don't have anything that offers incentives or
It's kind of bad, because in point of fact, you know, most of the ADUs will be rented out that, I don't know. You know, lower, lower than average rates I would expect in most cases, but who knows? Subjective.
Every bit counts. I did have one other question for staff, which was, I, I, I definitely, I really appreciate this. I'm looking forward to seeing what our APR looks like in, in March. But I was kind of hoping for updates that are a little more granular than, granular than something we'd see on an annual basis, like we permitted, you know, we, we granted building permits for two ADUs, a single-family home and a duplex or something since the last meeting, that, that sort of update. Is that, like, I, I asked for this because I, I'd kind of assumed that this information, this sort of information is very readily available and not a drain on staff's time to put together. Is that accurate?
I mean, what I would, what I'd generally comment is there's different types of reports produced for different purposes at different times. So we, we, planning division, we help provide, provide and prepare the annual housing report, which is kind of an update of our housing element. It's far more detailed than that snapshot I just showed with, shared with you. If you wanna see the whole report and all the detail and all the data on all of the units produced in a, in a year, that's available on our city website. Just type in housing. On our housing division page, you can scroll down, you can get the whole link, the whole packet, all the materials in that report. Now for the monthly updates, our building department actually does produce a report, kind of what you're describing, which goes to, I believe, the Department of Finance. We also prepare a report to the department, an annual report to the Department of Finance, which is a separate report. And we're just buried with reports. You'd be amazed at how many different sources, the real estate agencies and the like that ask and request that are presented and prepared in various formats. To see for us, to kind of minimize our workload and our, and the burden on staff time is to just be more accepting of one of the reports which is already readily prepared as opposed to be asking for it in a unique format or in a different way of presenting data that is more, I, I don't know, approachable or tangible.
Yeah, I think we don't wanna burden you, Stephen, with additional work. I would say, Adam, that, you know, it would be good to understand if there was something actionable you would see out of one of these, you know, reports. Otherwise, I think there's quite a bit of workload on the staff as it is. And so if we can leverage something that's already done on kind of a reasonable frequency, I would be supportive of that.
The monthly building department reports that Stephen just mentioned sounds like, like perfectly reasonable for that.
Yeah, I'd be happy to look into what that includes, again, because it's a building department report. I'm not sure exactly how detailed it is, like if it's gonna tell you where there's ADU units or where there's attached townhome units or what was your issue date and when was their final date? I don't know if it includes all that. It might just be a a monthly assessment of how many units were produced that month, right? So it might not be as detailed, but it will get, I'll, I'll definitely see what I'm able to gather from that and.
Yeah, the last thing I would wanna do is to, you know, duplicate, have you duplicate work that you're already doing and that another department's already doing and the existence of saying that, of an already produced report that, that covers this is almost certainly plenty. So I just didn't, wasn't aware that our building department put that out. Is that published on the city website?
I don't believe so. I think it's just a, a monthly reporting that they do via email to the agency that requests that.
Okay, if, if we could get a copy sent to us and if it turns out to be useful, like attached to the first meeting of each month or something like that, that would be ideal. Or as long as, or we can get it sent to us, however, however works out well. I'd like to see what can you send a copy of one of those to me, please?
Yeah, I'm not sure it's something I personally can agree to or disagree to, but I, I'd be happy to entertain. I'll, I'll share the example of the report with the director and we can know.
Yeah, I'm familiar with those reports, but you know, I, I just, I would have to say, Commissioner Bookminder, if you really have an interest on housing unit production, you certainly have the right to, to give the building department a call. I would hate to get in a routine or on a monthly basis, we need to report to the commission on our, our building permit issuance. I, I kind of feel that's a little bit outside the purview of the planning commission.
Okay, that's, that's fair.
If you do have an interest, please give them a call. They'll, they'll provide that information to you.
Okay.
I will mention just one other thing. We do have on our website, or, I mean, we do have this new permitting software, which everything is done online now. So that's mygovernmentonline.org. You can actually search permits and you can run a report, I believe, through the portal. So you actually pull up individual permits, you can click on the permits, find out the case details. If you were, you know, so inclined to actually go ahead and do that work, a lot of that can be done now remotely, online. You don't even need to contact the building department to generate such a report. That can be done as an individual. This is an idea. I just wanted to make sure that you're aware of that. I mean, a lot of our permits, which are even under progress, are available on that site.
Okay, I will, I, I've signed up for it. I haven't had, haven't used it that much, but I'll definitely take a look there as well. Thank you. The last thing I wanted to throw in was that I'm very much looking forward to our study session next, like, next meeting, just because those, those numbers on the APR for affordable housing are pretty grim. And I, I look forward to seeing what we can do to do better.
Great, thank you. Well, thank you very much, Stephen. That was a really wonderful report and nice to see that at least we're above the target for the above moderate units and we'll be looking together to see how we can accelerate some of the other income level categories as well. With that, Director Kermoyen, did you have anything to report?
Yeah, just on the director's report, just to once again remind you that at your February 10th meeting, we'll have the roundtable discussion with affordable housing developers. I think we have seven, at least seven that will be participating. So it should be a good conversation. If, if I can, think about, you know, meeting management, Madam Chair, and, and, you know, how we go about allowing, if, you know, if we allowed each housing developer a five-minute presentation and you have seven, you can start doing the math, right? So you know, if it's 10 minutes, okay, now we're in, you know, just an, over an hour just presentation. So think about how you would like to manage that. But, you know, but not dissuade their openness as to what they experience as developers.
I think it's Feb 9, is it Feb 9 or Feb 10? It's Tuesday, right?
According to the director's report, it says the 10th. Is that not a Tuesday?
I think that's a Wednesday.
Uh-oh.
Yeah.
It is a Wednesday.
It's the, it should be the 9th then.
Just to be sure. Okay, thanks.
February 9.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you, Director Kermoyen. I'll reach out to you about that and we can discuss some ideas.
I have one other thing to report on from, from yesterday. I spoke to the youth commission and gave them a presentation about the history of housing segregation, how it relates to Campbell and some avenues for future research. One thing that came up is that I was asked, how can we be more involved in the upcoming housing element? Because I know that HCD has a requirement that cities do more than the traditional kind of outreach. And high school students are not generally the sorts of people who show up at planning commission. I thought it might be a good opportunity to do outreach for the housing element when we do that through the youth commission.
Great. Okay, well, with that, this concludes our January 26th Planning Commission. Thank you, everybody. Have a great night and we will see you back in two weeks.
Take care, everyone.
Bye-bye. Good night.
Alright.